Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be starting soon. If committee members could please take their seats. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you all for being here for today's informational hearing. Please note the exits are located on either side of the room. If we are in the middle of an emergency, you will hear an alarm sound. Please exit the room calmly through the exits provided. Thank you very much. This meeting is not actually a public hearing. We want to be very clear about that. This is an informational hearing that we're having publicly. And so there are a few different rules that apply because of that we have asked others to join us. I should say, actually, I am Representative Liz Linehan from the 103rd District. I am the House Co-Chair of the Legislatures Committee on Children. I am going to throw it to my co-chair in just a moment, but I would like to take a minute to acknowledge some of the non-committee members that we have here with us today. First, I'd like to thank our House Minority Leader Vin Candelora. Thank you, sir, for being here today and for your commitment to children. And we have our House Chair of Appropriations, Representative Walker. Representative Walker, thank you so very much as always for your commitment as well. I'm going to send it to my co-chair for a brief introduction. Senator Marr.
Thank you so much. So we all know how important children are in our society, and now we need to protect them, make sure they're safe, and provide systems that work for them so that they can thrive in their life as adults. That's why we're here. We're not here to point fingers. We're here to figure out what it is the impact of this in the town, in the community, in the state, and then move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, very much. As the House Co-Chair, there are a few things that I would like to make very clear before we begin today's testimony. What we have heard reported on the online news is something that will need to be verified, and it is absolutely concerning. However, the reason we are here today is not, and I repeat, not, in order to put the children who are at these therapeutic homes. It is not a referendum on them. We are here solely for the purpose to determine how the legislature can support these kids within these communities, whether it be at the STAR Homes or whether it be in other therapeutic residency programs, whether it be before we reach a level of acuity where that is needed. Our job here in the legislature, and especially for the Committee on Children, is to ensure that all kids lead happy, healthy lives in the state of Connecticut. And that means sometimes we have to ask the tough questions. Sometimes we have to hear the tough answers. But make no mistake that right now, this is about the adults. This is about the adults in their lives, the adults that have worked for them, and what we can do as adults to make lives better for these kids. There will not be any blaming of the children in these programs tolerated in this committee. What we're going to do now is really work together to find answers. Like I say in every meeting, as we begin the Committee on Children meetings, once again, we are here to help these kids and all kids live safe, happy, healthy lives. And with that, we can begin. We have testimony. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I would like to actually go to our Senate Ranking Member. Madam, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm so happy to be here this afternoon. I'm hoping very much that we can get some clarity to some of the looming questions and and as our good Chair said, this really is all about the children and ensuring that the children are cared for. And that's what we're about as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And on a personal note, I want to thank you for your commitment to this. I know that this is located in your district, and so you have an even greater level of care of such a thing as possible. So thank you very much for your commitment to this. And Madam Vice Chair, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I just want to reiterate that this is about making sure our children get the services that they need and they deserve. We are talking about some of our most vulnerable children who are coming out of sometimes horrific situations by no fault of their own. So we want to make sure that we hear all the charges and we investigate and we make sure that these children know that they are seen, they are heard, and that we are doing absolutely everything to make sure that they are safe, healthy, and protected. So I just want to support the rest of my committee members in that sentiment, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. And we will now begin. I would like to make a very brief statement that this hearing is being televised and that a warning for those who are watching that we may be dealing with some pretty heavy issues as we often do here on the Committee on Children. And so just to maybe emotionally prepare yourself for those. We are moving on to item number three on the agenda, which is testimony by guests. Earlier, we, as co-chairs of the committee, have invited a bunch of people to testify because we believe they have a base of knowledge that is necessary for this committee to make some movements forward. However, we invited Margaret Han from the Bridge Family Center, and she could not be here in person. She did, however, submit written testimony. I'd like to now ask Kristin, our committee clerk, to read her testimony into the record. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Dear respected co-chairs of the Children's Committee, Representative Linehan and Senator Marr, Representative Dauphine and Senator Semenara. My name is Margaret A. Han. I am the Executive Director of the Bridge Family Center. I appreciate the opportunity to submit to you my written testimony regarding the informational hearing being held on October 11, 2023. While I would like to be there in person due to pending litigation and at the advice of our legal counsel, I will not be in attendance. It is my understanding that the purpose of this informational hearing is in response to the recent incidences the Harrington STAR program and to determine next steps to address the immediate needs of children in DCF care. Before I address the specific incidences in Harrington recently brought forward, I feel that it is important that you understand the history and the services the Bridge offers to some of our most vulnerable children who came to us as victims of serious abuse and neglect through no fault of their own. The Bridge Family Center was founded in 1969 in response to the needs of young people in the community of West Hartford. In 1978, we opened Junction 1019, a shelter for boys and girls in crisis in West Hartford. Since then, we have opened three additional short-term assessment respite, STAR Homes, Harrington Woolkit Hartford, and a cluster site apartment program for young men. We currently have 37 residential beds, 34 of which are contracted to serve young people in DCF care. The Bridge also has four licensed outpatient psychiatric clinics for children, a family resource center, a teen center, and the Mosaic Parenting Center. We are also the town of West Hartford's Youth Service Bureau. The Bridge is accredited by the Council of Accreditation COA. Last year, the Bridge served over 9,000 people in our many programs. The Bridge has over 150 employees. Prior to assuming their duties, all Bridge staff must undergo criminal child's protective services and DMV background checks. Employees must pass a drug test and a physical and physical. Education is also verified. Training includes at least 32 hours or more of on-shift training with experienced staff. Additional training includes therapeutic crisis intervention, Red Cross first aid, and CPR, Narcan, DCF mandated reporting training, risking connection medication certification, and many more service professional development opportunities focusing on the youth we serve. Individual and supervision is also provided. We live by operate every, excuse me, we live by and operate every day bar tagline, "Every family, every child, every time." A commitment and a responsibility that we take very seriously. The Bridge has a reputation of serving youth that are routinely turned away by other providers. The youth in our care are victims of unspeakable traumatic events. They have had numerous failed placements, including foster care, hospitalizations, residential treatment centers, detention, and more. The Bridge is highly regarded by the Department of Children and Families. Our partnership dates to 1978 when we opened our West Hartford Shelter for young people. The Harrington STAR program opened its doors in 2008. To date, over 350 girls have been served in the Harrington STAR. Girls in our care came to us because their parents are unable to care for them. Most STAR residences came to us from foster care and are discharged back to foster care. In fact, according to our records, 41% of the girls in Harrington STAR program last fiscal year had more than 11 previous foster care placements. Average length of stay in fiscal year 2023 in the Harrington program was 60 days with a range of 1 to 221 days. Some girls are victims of domestic minor sex trafficking. Last year at the Harrington STAR program, 29% of the young girls were involved in domestic minor sex trafficking and continued to participate in that in that behavior, excuse me, while they were placed with us. The Bridge strongly discourages participation in the DMST through a variety of treatment interventions. When possible, we also look very, we also work closely with law enforcement to share license plate and car description so they can investigate those individuals involved. It is also important to mention here that DMST experts highly recommend that victims have use of a cell phone so they can contact the program, law enforcement, or other resources should they find themselves in danger. In this case, safety far outweighs the risks of the youth having a phone. STAR programs are not locked facilities. Staff cannot physically restrain a resident from leaving the program. We do everything possible to dissuade a resident from leaving using our verbal intervention training and skills. If a girl leaves, we follow her. If she starts to run away, we do not give chase due to safety issues. Local law enforcement, DCF, on-call supervisor, and other involved parties are called when a girl leaves the program without permission. Girls are given age and treatment appropriate curfews. The Bridge policy in calling the police lists specific reasons for calling the police or 911. These include incidences that pose an immediate threat to the safety of the residences and staff that are not responsive to staff interventions or medical emergency. Despite what you may have heard, police or ambulance personnel are not used as a first recourse to manage day-to-day behavioral issues with residences. Staff use de-escalation techniques to calm, excuse me, de-escalation techniques to calm tense situations as a first response. At no time has the Bridge, or to our knowledge, DCF instructed staff not to call the police except for the reasons stated above. We do everything in our power in collaboration with members of our community. The Bridge has an advisory council in our residential programs. Harrington is no exception. This council has been in place since 2008. Our goal is, excuse me, our goal is to meet quarterly with a focus on the interface with the program and our neighbors. Participants include Bridge managers, DCF representatives, the town first selectmen, law enforcement, neighbors, the faith community, et cetera. Unfortunately, during some of these meetings, as recently as last summer, Harrington town leaders made several concerning statements. A town leader touted that Harrington has the largest percentage of gun owners per capita in the state and that our girls need to be mindful of that fact if they are on neighbor's property. During the same meeting, the girls were serviced, the girls we serve were referred to as prostitutes by town representatives. I mentioned this meeting as an example of the tone that has been frequently taken by Harrington town leaders. Recently, a Harrington volunteer ambulance worker told the media that the Harrington STAR was under state police investigation and accused the Bridge of being involved in human trafficking. After confirming with the state police that we were not being investigated, we had to ask several news stations to issue a retraction. We have never denied that the incidents which, incidences which have occurred at the Harrington STAR program recently are service in nature, are serious in nature, excuse me. As Executive Director, my priority was to address these issues immediately, which we did. Expedient steps were were taken, including suspension and termination of the involved employee, notification to DCF and the Bridge management staff. The Bridge fully cooperated with law enforcement and DCF during any investigations, including residences residents were counseled by our onsite staff clinicians. In the, in the spring, in response to an increase in serious incidents in Harrington, we restructured our program. This included terminating several employees that proved to be a poor fit for the program, contracting with an outside organization who offers intensive onsite observation and training geared towards the behavioral management of the youth in our care. We are also adding an additional full-time staff position to the second shift on our All-Star on all our STAR programs. On June 6, 2023, we asked DCF to reduce our bed capacity while we work with this transition. They grant, excuse me, they granted this request. On July 27, 2023, the Bridge was notified that our intake was closed as of May 31, 2023, and we had been placed on corrective action plan. To be clear, the Bridge had already initiated the steps to improve our program performance prior to the being issued a cap. The Bridge continues to work in collaboration with DCF to strengthen the services we provide. The needs of youths served in Bridge programs, as well as other nonprofit organizations serving similar populations, have become more acute over the past few years. Remember, the Harrington STAR has been open since 2008. In the last fiscal year, incidences have shown a significant increase. Occupancy also increased by 53% during that same timeframe. These increases are not unique to the Bridge or the Harrington program. The increased acuity of the youth we serve, along with a statewide workforce crisis post-pandemic, have created a perfect storm for nonprofits. Attracting and maintaining qualified staff is challenging not only for the population we serve, but for all as we struggle to offer competitive wages in our profession. The overarching question remains, where do we go from here? The Bridge offers the following suggestions. DCF, in collaboration with its community partners, providers, and legislators, take the lead in inviting candid conversations about the gaps in care for our youth we serve, including those we are court-involved. STAR programs are only a part of that conversation. Providers must have a medium full seat at the table as part of this process. This by no means negates the efforts made by the current DCF administration and provider engagement, just that needs to continue on a greater level. The march towards the reduction of congregate care beds over the past 12-plus years needed needs to be evaluated for the effectiveness. The number of DCF youth in congregate care have been reduced by nearly 25%. While this is an impressive number, 20, while this is an impressive number, metrics that indicate the success of the youth diverted from congregate care placements needs a closer look. What happens to young people ages 11 to 18 that are not appropriate for foster care or foster care continually fails them? The STAR most, the STAR model must be reevaluated based on the acuity of the youth we serve. The scope of services was written for a population that has changed dramatically. Providers need to have an active partner in this discussion. Nonprofits must be a priority in the state budget. Providers in Connecticut are continually being asked to serve very complicated youth. We do so without hesitation because that is our commitment to our missions. If you could see what we see on a daily basis, you would be amazed at what our staff accomplished with so little. Over the past few years, resources have worn thin, though the workforce shortage in Connecticut has left us all struggling to hire and retain qualified staff. Coal increases have been sporadic and not kept up with inflation. Providers consistently go beyond the coal adjustment to keep pace with the likes of Target and Amazon, for example. The fiscal year 2024 coal increase, DCF contracts, but, excuse me, for example, the fiscal year 2024 coal increase for DCF contracts was 2.55%. The Bridge paid its DCF contracted staff an average 8% increase. There are fewer placement options for youth that need a higher level of care to, to a profound reduction of congregate care beds. More complicated youth translate into increased police calls, assaults, AWOLs, and longer lengths of stay. Staff turnover escalates as do workers' compensation claims and insurance costs. Professional development costs increase as providers struggle to offer needed support to direct care staff. As previously mentioned, the Bridge has recently engaged the support of a contractor to offer enhanced training focused on behavioral management of the youth we serve. We have also added an additional full-time staff member to the afternoon shifts for all of our staff programs. As I mentioned earlier, due to pending litigation, my comments are filtered. From my perspective, it is tremendously frustrating to sit back and let others spread fake accusations, excuse me, false accusations and misinformation. I do not debate the serious nature of the recent events at our program. Frankly, they could have, they could happen to any provider in Connecticut due to the nature of the work we do, and all of us take all of us take any such event very seriously. Community-based congregate care programs are frequently the target of municipalities that are burning with an increased demand on their emergency services due to the acuity of the youth we serve. The Bridge fully understands that concern. What we do not understand is that, is the need to represent our program on so many levels, including accusations of being involved in human trafficking and that state police are investigating, which they are not. The Bridge took immediate and corrective measures to address each incident, including but not limited to suspending and eventually terminating involved staff, filing required DCF reports, cooperating fully with both DCF and law enforcement. We never ignore any allegation or significant incidents. The Bridge also initiated several pragmatic pragmatic enhancements that go well beyond DCF recommendations. The truly unfortunate side here is that none of those actions, despite our efforts, were ever mentioned by the media. Providers are continually being asked to do more with less. When negative media campaigns are legitimized, it has a chilling effect on the work we do as well as our ability to bear the fiscal and human capital costs associated with it. In closing, the Bridge remains committed to serving Connecticut's most vulnerable children. I hope you have found this testimony informative and helpful. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my perspective from the front lines of providing these young people with the care they deserve. Former Guards Margaret A. Han, Executive Director. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. You really did a fantastic job. That was a lot to say, and we appreciate your time. I just want to give our viewing audience and people in the audience here today a reminder that those words were not the words of Christian Tularski, our clerk. Those are, in fact, the words of Margaret Han from the Bridge Family Center. He was simply reading that testimony. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Now I'd like to ask, please, Commissioner Durantes of the Department of Children and Families. Thank you for being here, Commissioner. We have asked you to prepare an opening statement like we have for all people here to testify, and then we will open this up to questions. Commissioner, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to Senator Marr, Representative Linehan, Senator Semenara, Representative Dauphine, and distinguished members of the Committee on Children, and all of the additional guest legislators from the Connecticut General Assembly. I am Vanessa Durantes, the Commissioner of the Connecticut Department of Children and Families, and I thank you for the invitation to attend today's forum regarding the Short Term Assessment and Respite STAR Program in Harrington operated by the Bridge Family Center. I am accompanied by members of the DCF leadership team to answer any questions. DCF has sent a comprehensive response to several questions from committee members that serves as my primary statement on this matter. In addition, we've included a detailed timeline of events that occurred at this STAR home and the actions DCF took to assist the Bridge in serving the girls who are placed there. As you heard from Mrs. Han's statement, since 1969, the Bridge Family Center has been a valued nonprofit provider with several contracts in our service array. They offer many services to the department, including STAR Homes that they manage. The Bridge CEO, Ms. Han, and the department have worked with local officials over several months to ascertain the scope and of the issues and work towards resolution. Examples of our response include DCF executive team meeting with the Bridge leadership staff in response to a community incident in April of 2023. The DCF Bureau of External Affairs also coordinated two meetings with emergency personnel, town officials, state legislators, and in response to express concerns. These meetings were held in November of 2022 and July of 2023. To further support stability of this level of care, oversight of STAR programs contracts are recently have been transit, transitioned to the DCF Division on Behavioral Health and Community Services System. DCF Behavioral Services Division leadership have been meeting with STAR program leaders to assess the STAR program resources, referral processes, youth service planning, and these discussions will inform the ongoing process of identifying program needs and additional resources or modifications should they be needed. The department will continue to work with our provider partners to enhance the role of the service type in the larger behavioral health system of care. I also wanted to make sure that we highlight that in 2021, the Declaration from the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, American Academy of Pediatrics, and Children's Hospital Association noted, "We must identify strategies to meet the needs of these challenges through innovation and action using state, local, and national approaches to improve the access to and quality of care across the continuum of mental health, promotion, prevention, and treatment." Here in Connecticut, the legislature has joined in elevating the attention to the struggles children and youth and their families have experienced post-pandemic. We have collectively seen an increase in the acuity of their needs and behaviors. I implore all listening to also consider another driver of this type of externalizing behavior of children is their trauma exposure prior to the young person's placement in state custody, which also has been exacerbated during the pandemic. There is no panacea. Each child has unique needs, which is why together we have built a new, we have built new treatment models and programs to discover and evaluate which service is effective for each child. As you are aware, our Connecticut system has been challenged in finding the appropriate services for every child in need. We serve a small population of children whose acute needs make them vulnerable to predatory victimization. They don't participate in DMST. They are being preyed upon and require more specialized and tailored service and tailored services. DCF is committed to evolving our treatment service array, as you have noted over the last two legislative sessions, to bolster our system with new and innovative programs to support our youth and their families. Rather than repeat the previous responses which the committee has received, my team and I are here to provide further information and are prepared to answer any questions asked. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you for being here. I do know that there is the timeline to be put on the screen. Did you want to go over that timeline now, or did you want to answer some questions? I think the timeline is appropriate to do now. Would you agree? Okay, great. Mr. Clerk, can you please put the timeline on the screens? Please, Commissioner, go ahead when you can. I believe that the timeline is in our packets. If the committee members want to look on, and Kristin will begin.
So the timeline has been pulled together in response to the questions that were submitted because it was difficult to ascertain the period under review from 2021 through 2023 of the incidents that have occurred in this particular STAR home. So we broke down the 2021 into the winter, spring, summer, and fall. There was an incident in the winter of 2021 that was a reported incidence of alleged sexual contact between two youth at the home. The allegation of sexual contact between, and another allegation of sexual contact between a Bridge employee and a young person that was placed there. The DCF and provided response to that particular, those two incidences was that a Caroline report was immediately made and HR action was immediately taken by the Bridge staff. So one of the things that you will see throughout the course of our timeline is that multiple divisions within DCF had responses to this particular home because if there was an allegation Because if there was an allegation of suspected child abuse and neglect that would come through our care line, and I have our care line director here if there are any questions about reports that come through our care line, and they conduct special investigations on facilities that we license. You'll also hear that that SIU or Special Investigations Unit collaborated with law enforcement and an arrest warrant was filed at that particular time. The other division that was actively and is actively involved is our licensing division. They've conducted quarterly visits and a service development plan was written at that particular time with written policies and procedures. There was a quarterly group care meeting and DCF standardized trainings were also occurring during this time. And then typically, our Special Investigations Unit, Licensing Unit, and Regulatory Programmatic folks will talk with each other related to incidences that have occurred. In the spring of 2021, there were escalating AWOL incidences at this particular home. DCF and provider response, AWOL prevention discussed within group care settings, and again, regular SIU meeting, monthly meetings with our licensing division. The summer of 2021, the AWOL incidences continue, licensing continues their quarterly visits with their service development plans with emphasis on sleeping accommodations. There was also involvement of our Wilderness School that the DCF that DCF offers to adolescents on positive activities and discussion related to Narcan. In the fall of 2021, there was an incident related to alleged physical assault on a youth by a bridge employee on a report of alleged physical assault of between two youth there. The DCF and provider response in the fall of 2021 was that a Caroline report was made and immediate HR action was taken by the bridge. There was an SIU investigation on bridge staff for inappropriate restraint, which was substantiated. The bridge terminated that employee and bridge staff called 911 for medical evaluations of that particular incident. The licensing follow-up was because they did not follow specific physical restraint procedures, and there was guidance and support given around that for the remaining staff in that home. There were also one-on-one services offered to help provide supervision for a particular young person that was placed in the home at that time. Moving to 2022, in the winter of 2022, there was an incident and an activity alleging sexual contact between a bridge employee and a young person. The DCF and provider responses were that a Caroline report was made and immediate HR action was taken by bridge staff. The SIU investigation in that incident was unsubstantiated. Licensing cited regulatory violations and Action Service Development Plan was noted, a lack of staffing at that particular time. The bridge retrained staff on supervision policies and there was a suspension of new admissions at that time. Licensing made their quarterly visit and service development plan regarding physical space was entered into. Community meeting with stakeholders occurred during that time. Then, along with monthly group care meetings and domestic minor sex trafficking training was offered at that time. In the spring of 2022, there were no significant activities noted. AWOL prevention was discussed with this home and discussion of group care meetings along with their regular SIU monthly meetings on just oversight of all of the this level of care. In the summer of 2022, also no significant activity noted in our timeline. Licensing conducted their quarterly meeting related to the kitchen equipment and food handling. Community meeting was held with stakeholders. Monthly group care meetings occurred as well as more domestic minor sex trafficking prevention information was shared. In the fall of 2022, there was an alleged physical assault on a youth by a bridge employee and a report of an alleged sexual contact between two youth there. The response was a Caroline report was made and immediate HR action was taken by bridge staff. The SIU investigation substantiated and placed the employee on the central registry. There was a collaboration with law enforcement and arrest warrant is filed. The youth was arrested for sexual assault and the bridge terminates an employee. Licensing quarterly visit occurred along with service development plan relied related to their physical space and a community meeting was held with stakeholders. There was a monthly group care meeting, DMST training offered, and provider collaborated with agency-serving DMST use. Moving on to January and February of this year, so the most recent incidences involving this provider. There was an incident involving a young person arrested for community theft. The next day, our licensing followed up as well as our Child Protective Service staff. Bridge response, one youth moved to another program and quarterly group care provider meetings were held and the topic of that particular meeting was AWOL and best practices shared between this level of care. In March of 2023, a community incident occurred with escalating incidences between youth. Licensing followed up, site visits occurred, monitoring, closer monitoring begins. One youth was referred out of the site and AWOL prevention guidelines were sent to all providers. Quarterly group care meetings were held and speakers from Caroline related to implicit bias, substance use training, DMST, and guidance relating securing agency vehicle keys occurred in March of 2023. In April of 2023, allegations of sexual contact between bridge employee and a young person. Caroline report was made, immediate HR to action was taken by the bridge staff. There was an SIU investigation which was substantiated and the person was placed on the central registry. Law enforcement was contacted. The bridge terminated the employee and licensing conducted their follow-up as well as DCF offering human trafficking assessments continuing through April of 2023. In May of 2023, youth became aggressive with state troopers. DCF had suspended admissions and licensing and quarterly visits occurred, including a service development plan related to that incident. Instructions on safety procedures and supervision were reinforced with the program. In June of 2023, a youth stole the bridge van. At that time, a Caroline report was made and a special investigation unit reopens on the employee from the April assault and that disposition was pending. There was a collaboration with law enforcement and the bridge took immediate HR action to to develop remediation plans and develop new protocols and procedures. Two to two, two to three times per week, there were unannounced monitoring visits to the facility and the corrective action plan development. In July, August of 2023, there were no significant new activities, but licensing action and formal corrective action plan begins with a quarterly group care meeting and discussions on AWOL and returns with the second community meeting with stakeholders and legislators that occurred during that time. Harwinson site now had a new program director at that time. And then now we are up to the present time at September, October of 2023. There have been no new youth in this program as of 9/26/23. No youth at all at the at the program as of 9/26/23. Admissions continue to be on hold. Monitoring continues, group care meetings and domestic minor sex trafficking have been offered. So there's also a note on our timeline that between 2021 and 2023, trainings have been given by the provider or offered by DCF that include restorative justice, positive relationships and boundaries, trauma, anxiety, attachment, DMST, and substance misuse.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. That was a lot to get through and we appreciate you doing so quickly and actually very thoroughly. So I'm going to start with just a few questions. The first is kind of an easy one on and very high level, but essentially these timelines have multiple incidences. Is this typical of STAR homes?
So when I think about the the level of care that stars represent, I would say yes, you know, the the types of incidences that require response, as I've indicated here, do not seem to fall out of line with what typically happens in our STAR homes. What we saw that was atypical here were those incidences that involve suspected child abuse or neglect that resulted in the special investigation, special investigations, investigations that occurred. So the SIU investigations were out of the ordinary and were not normal for this level of.
And so within the number of homes that are in the state, not just those operated by the Bridge Family Center, because there are other operators of other STAR homes, correct?
There are.
Okay. And and so would you say that this is atypical, not just of the Bridge family, but of all the homes? I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, I would say that it is typical and that the the concern I think that we see here is that when there are homes that are placed in smaller communities, the impact on their EMS system is probably felt a lot more intense intensely than it is in our larger areas that have multiple resources that are able to respond. But that when we look back at the data that supports how many calls were made or how many notifications were made through our system, I didn't see this as an outlier. What I saw as an outlier is the special investigations and the reported child child abuse and neglect maltreatment investigations that we conducted.
And would you, would you say that it's fair to say that regardless of where these children are located, whether it be at home with their parents, in a foster home, or in a STAR home, that they are deserving of any such activity through EMS, regardless, because if that, because they're human and that's what they need?
If a child is being harmed, I would expect that our communities would respond to make sure that they get the care that they need. So that is definitely fair to say.
Absolutely. And then some questions that I have regarding the timeline. In multiple incidences, you say that as we hope the system would work, it did in that a call was made to the Caroline and then it is, there's an allegation and then there is the removal of staff. Do you know, let's just start with the winter of 2021, when there was the allegation of sexual contact between a bridge employee and a youth? Do you know the amount of time that lapsed between the allegation and the removal of that staff member?
It looks like that the bridge responded immediately, but I do have my Caroline director who has reviewed the special investigation investigations and she can give a probably more accurate response.
That would be fantastic. Thank you. If you could please state your name and your title for the record.
Hi, good, good afternoon. I'm Lisa Damon. I'm the Caroline Director at DCF.
Thank you very much. And do you know approximately how much time lapsed between the allegation of abuse to the Caroline and the removal of the staff member in the winter of 2021?
Oh, I'm sorry. There were immediate actions taken by the Harwin home.
Can you define immediate, please? Like as soon as they heard it, they're out?
As soon as, yes.
Okay.
Typically, what happens in investigations of congregant care settings, there is an HR component immediately and you want to ensure the safety of the youth of the of the particular youth that's been victimized, potentially allegedly victimized, and the other youth that are in the facility. So they will take immediate action to ensure that that happens and that typically means putting them out on leave.
Okay. And and then do you happen to know about the amount of time that laps between the removal of the employee and the subsequent arrest? Or for the winter of 2021?
Can you repeat that question? I apologize.
And then the, do you know the amount of time between the removal of the staff member, which you said was immediate, and the time that that member was arrested?
I do not know that.
You don't know that? That's fine. But would you, would it be fair to say that in all of these instances in the timeline, that the time that laps between the allegation and the removal of the staff member was immediate?
Yes, I would. We collaborate with law enforcement. We collaborate with the Harwin staff or HR department. Everything is done jointly, collaboratively to ensure that the children are safe, including the investigation process.
I do want to make note that this committee passed legislation, I believe, this year. Commissioner, you probably remember better than I do that once something like this happens, that the caretakers of the children who are in the congregant care settings or these STAR homes, or whether they're in hospitals or rehabilitation programs, that they are notified of the arrest of the employee. Did, did that happen in 2021? Do you know before we pass this law?
In terms of notification?
Correct.
I don't believe that it was as consistent, but I do believe as a result of the notification, we are consistently meeting the the expectations of that.
Yes, I'd like to say, Commissioner, thank you very much for that. You have been instrumental in helping us do that and recognizing the importance of that. I was just wondering if, in fact, that happened with regularity. But now we know that that is in fact the law, so people who are watching today can be comforted by the fact that that law is in effect now.
The other thing that I think is important for those watching to know is that all of the children that are placed in a STAR setting are committed to the department. So essentially, we are their guardians. So the notification is to ourself, but it's also to make sure that we, you know, know what's happening in a particular setting.
Excellent. And then just a few more of the small questions and I'm going to ask my co-chair to take over. You talk about AWOL prevention. Can we discuss a little bit about what AWOL is in this setting and why it happens?
So there's a difference between AWOL and runaway. And we often hear those terms conflated with each other. AWOL simply is the acronym that's used to describe when a young person is not where they're supposed to be at the appropriate time. So if a young person is supposed to come back from school by 3:30 and they're not there, they're they're considered AWOL. And so those incidences where a particular prescribed period of time has gone by and the young person has not returned, there are times that an AWOL is indicated and a child has called to say, I'm good, I'm with my friends, I'm just not there, even though they're supposed to be back in the the setting, that's still considered an AWOL. What I will also give as an explanation here is the youth and the young people that are placed in these homes are typical adolescents who have been traumatized. And we know that adolescent behavior, part of the characteristics of being an adolescent is kind of bucking those rules and not following curfew and not sometimes doing what you're supposed to do. So I think a lot of emphasis has been placed on AWOL behavior. That is typical adolescent behavior. However, they are, they are young people who are acclimating to a community from which they are not, not a member of, you know. So all of our providers who have group homes in community settings work to be good neighbors, good community participants, because the kids are going to school and community, they are participating and working sometimes and attending clinical sessions in community. However, they, you know, haven't grown up there in most, in most of these situations.
Let's unpack that for a minute. What is the benefit to a child who is the victim of a traumatic experience and is and has a therapeutic experience now at this home and is going to school in the community? I would assume that that experience is a positive one and leads to healing. Am I correct in that?
I believe it is. You know, I think smaller settings for kids, you know, family settings, of course, are preferred. But when children cannot be safely, cannot safely remain at home or with their relatives and they have to be in a setting that's non-family, smaller settings like a STAR, like a therapeutic group home are most conducive to a home-like setting, but it's still not home. So, you know, responding to a child that has had a traumatic experience, resuming normalized behavior with their peers and within community is always best.
And these are not staff secure, these are not, this is a home. It looks like a home when you go in and the children are expected to attend school, some have jobs. So it's not a locked facility, correct?
No, and you know, even the way I would categorize that is that, you know, all children, particularly adolescents, particularly adolescents who've experienced what we know all kids and families have gone through over the last three years, need a sense of security and they need a sense of stability and they need a sense of belonging, inclusion, and home. And, you know, it's hard when family separation occurs to replicate that in a setting that is also kind of struggling to meet the needs of a child who has experienced social isolation or a traumatic event before they came into DCF care. So all of that is happening at the same time as we try to kind of unpack all of this. And, you know, I appreciated what you said at the beginning of the hearing in that some of the stuff that we'll be talking about is really heavy and hard to hear. And I would just suggest that some of the kids that we're talking about are living it. And so it is pretty hard and we want to make sure that all of us are responding to their needs in the setting like this, that may not be the most conducive to where we would like to see them be in a long-term place, but we would want them to be at home once their situation has been stabilized.
And as chairs of the committee, we often ask a ton of questions for the benefits of our members, but I do want to be respectful of the other committee members here. I just have one last question. For these STAR homes, this particular STAR home and others within the system, are there for the training of the staff onsite? are there, for the training of the staff onsite, are there licensed social workers or anyone with, you know, trauma-induced practice, training?
Yeah, so the STAR level of care was actually enhanced. And one of the things that occurred over the last two to three years, and I'll have one of my subject matter experts join me to describe what that actually looked like, enhance the clinical supports that each of them have. They also have a clinician. They have a nurse or accessibility to a nurse to provide medical care that are at the homes. And so they do have a clinician available that can conduct groups onsite and can de-escalate situations onsite.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm going to ask Senator Marr.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too, Senator.
A question, when in your opening statement, you spoke about the oversight of the STAR program, contracts have been transitioned within DCF to the Behavioral Health Community Service System Division. And I was curious, where were they before?
So they were before in general operations, so it was more kind of thinking about licensing through a regulatory lens as opposed to the behavioral health clinical lens and continuum. So Dr. Frank Gregory is here to answer kind of some of those questions about why it feels structurally the best place for it to be within our infrastructure.
Dr. Gregory, be willing to speak to that, please? The impact of why behavioral health is important in this oversight?
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Gregory. I'm the administrator at DCF of the Children's Behavioral Health Community Service System. And so I think, to be precise, so the STAR home would not be intended to be a treatment center per se, but it is a supportive environment which has clinical supports available to the youth and is able to respond to their needs. And so as the Commissioner referenced, it includes some staff who are clinicians. All of the staff, as has been heard, receive training in issues related to youth development, trauma, youth specialized needs. And so it's important that particularly because the youth who are served by these programs, as we've heard, are quite vulnerable and have complex needs that the staff receives the training and support to be able to respond as best they can. And so with that in mind, we have transitioned the programs as we have continued to develop the Behavioral Health Community Service System Division. It was thought that these programs, in addition to some other group care settings, would come to behavioral health so that we could provide additional supports and collaboration with the providers consistent with our Children's Behavioral Health mandate.
And I may have missed this, but at what point was this done? Timing on that?
Toward the end of the summer.
So this is a reflection of the incidents and the things that are happening right now is a different way of looking at it and providing support.
It coincides with this. I would not say it was directly in response to this chain of events. So it was, but yes, it was at the end of the summer.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is youth over 13, the 12-hour wait before they're declared AWOL. And so I was curious as to the reason for that. Is that for Caroline?
Well, I'll also call Dr. Linda Dixon up to talk about the what I understood the question to be was the length of time before a young person is declared AWOL.
Correct. Hello, I'm Linda Dixon. I'm an administrator in the Department of Children and Families, Transitional Supports and Success. So in our AWOL policy, there's three different levels of notification, and it depends on an individual assessment of the youth. So for youth in general over 13, you have a larger window, but for youth that are presenting with psychiatric needs and psychiatric issues, you would make that report within the hour. So it depends on the individual assessment. And the highest length of time you can wait is for a youth eight, over 18 with no psychiatric issues.
So at that point, is that when the police are called? Or is, so what I'm hearing you say, if I can restate what I heard. What I heard is it's part of the care plan and assessment of each of the students within, or not students, sorry, residents of the STAR home. So if that's the case, and you said over 18, can you restate that?
When youth are over 18, there's a longer window of time that you would wait.
Okay. And so based on the individual assessments for each person, they would be called at a different time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's, I actually really prefer that because we have to deal with each of the residents as to where they are. So thank you for that. And then a final question, could someone please speak to? I, there is a lot of conversation around the training on de-escalation. As someone who's worked at a psychiatric hospital and been inherent, been present as part of de-escalation techniques, and I was taught them, can you speak to what those de-escalation techniques are? And how they're utilized? I don't know who to ask for that, Dr. Gregory or Commissioner?
Yeah, you know, I think that one of the things that we pride ourselves in is regularly updating the different levels of competencies that the type of care would need or would require. So there's regular and routine trainings, a training curriculum that they have that one of my subject matter experts can offer. But then there's also a response to an incident. So if there is an incident that involves a child or a series of young people exhibiting behaviors that could be deemed unsafe, we would specialize a training in our response to meet those needs. So there's the regular and routine curriculum as well as a response to episodic behavior.
And the only thing I would add to that is we have a policy in DCF that we only place youth in child caring facilities where staff have been trained in a restraint curriculum that's approved by DCF. And I believe this provider uses TCI, Therapeutic Crisis Intervention, and that is approved by the department. So it might involve verbal de-escalation, talking to youth, trying to debrief post-event should, should something happen. So they use TCI. And I believe their trauma-informed model that they use is risking connections.
Thank you. I misspoke. I do have one more question. And that is on the use, the fact that residents are allowed to retain cell phones. And because of the minor sex trafficking that they may have experienced. Can you say more about that? Because I think that that's very difficult for people to understand why people would need a cellphone.
First, I can, Senator, I can talk about the regulations first, and the regulations were written in 1994 when phones were on the wall. So the regulation actually requires that youth have access to a phone, and that was pre-cell phone. There's a work group right now of department members, and we're working with providers about trying to modernize or make things more modern. Youth are supposed to have access to a phone, but providers are also supposed to adhere to something called the Reasonable and Prudent Parent Standards, which is giving youth activities that are normal and developmentally appropriate. Cell phones right now are very common with teenagers, and in these open settings where youth are gone most of the day to be in school, it is normal and expected to give a teenager a cellphone. And if youth gets in trouble, we often want youth to have a phone to call someone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will also reiterate that that is a belief that I share, that certainly if we have youth that may be in danger and we are setting them outside the care of the adults in their lives, that they certainly have the ability to reach out if they're in trouble. I think that when, when we talk about cellphone usage, we have to look at that possibility always. So thank you. Senator Semenora?
Good afternoon again, and thank you for the, for the department for doing a very thorough job with your report. I do have several questions, so hopefully you can bear with me. The first question is, I guess my initial question is, what is considered a youth? I saw in some, some written things that the STAR home has ages 12 to 18. Then I saw in some other places that it's 10 to 20. So I'm just trying to clarify, what, what do we actually in this instance consider a youth?
That's a great question. In Connecticut, as far as, particularly in this administration, we discourage children 12 and under from being placed in congregate settings. And in fact, every month I receive any child that's in a non-family setting that is committed to the department, I receive a report to make sure that I know what that, what that's about. And typically, children under the age of 12 in congregate settings are either in a hospital setting or some type of specialized treatment. Related to STAR, what is the age eligibility to clarify?
For the license of the STAR program, it's, you can be 11 through 17, through 17, 11 months to be placed. But there's always a waiver process, and I think that might explain some discrepancies when you, you see different numbers. If there's an exception, someone can submit a request for a waiver.
So you're saying the age range in the STAR homes is age 11 through 17?
So sorry about that. The licensing age is 11 through 17. But the typical placement in that level of care would require a waiver if they're younger than 12 or over 17.
Because in some of these, in this particular instance, there was an 18-year-old in the home when there were 14-year-olds, let's say, correct?
I don't know what the makeup of the children were at that particular time, but was there, and which particular incident were you referring to, Senator?
I'm just saying there, there was an incident in the report that you gave me that there was an 18-year-old in the home.
To be placed, you have to be up through 18. So then it would be a 60-day length of stay. So you could have individuals who are over 18.
So you can have an individual who's over 18 for 60 days? Was that the case with it, with the, with this incident that took place in? I'm sorry. I don't have the exact date. I'll have to find the exact date as to what, when that happened. I will look for that.
Okay.
But that, that is a question of mine. How old was the 18-year-old? Was it, they just turned 18? Because according to, yeah, according to the record, there was an 18-year-old in the home with.
I certainly hear your question, and I have reviewed the profile of children that have been in the home over the last couple of years. And there were some that were placed with us at 17 or at 16 and had longer lengths of stay. So it would not, we would not eject a child if they turned 18 while they were in residence at the STAR home.
Okay. My other, my other question, I'm going to go to your timeline. So between the winter of 2021 and the winter of 2022, there were two incidents between youths, youth to youth, one of them sexual and two of them assaults. And there were also three incidents between staff and youth. Two of them sexual, of sexual nature, and one of physical assault. This all occurred according to your timeline before July 2022, okay? I guess my question to you was, you, you renewed the contract for the STAR home in July of 2022. Given the fact that there were five incidences that took place concerning incidences, was there any pause or consideration made not to renew this contract?
I don't believe so. And, you know, the reason why I can answer that with a level of competence is because each of those incidences were responded to and investigated at the time that they occurred. And so when, when a license is renewed, all of those things are looked at, you know, from our licensing requirements through our Special Investigations Unit. So I don't believe that during that time period, there was a concern to not renew the license. Because also, when you think about, again, what has occurred over the last three years related to young people, it does not surprise me that there were a concentration of incidences over a year's time.
Okay, but there was a large number of incidences over a two-period, one, one-year period of time, many of them between staff and residences. And this did not give anyone pause to say, maybe perhaps we shouldn't renew the contract here.
I don't believe that there was pause and renew the contract, but I want to make sure that you're confident in the department's ability to respond to every incident that has been reported to us. We conduct an investigation, we conduct it with multiple divisions within the department to make sure that the children's needs are met and that the children in a particular facility are safe. And in this particular situation, the provider responded with removing particular staff members or the makeup of the children change over time in terms of who's there. Additional training is provided, and any type of regulatory incidences that have occurred also were addressed through service development plans during that time. So, you know, in hindsight, when we look back over this two-year period, and we went through to determine what happened during what period of time, what was going on societally, and what was the response of this particular provider, and what was the response of the department? I can say that we responded to meet the needs of the incidents that occurred at the time.
I believe you looked into the incidents. I'm not making any accusation that that's not the case. But what I'm trying to bring out is that we had a number of incidences here of sexual nature, both between resident and resident and staff and resident. And they, I'm assuming, and you have reported that the staff were removed, and I'm sure that that happened. But it seems like they were removed and then new staff came in, and this still occurred. So when you say, I guess it questions really how I feel, or, and it should question how anybody would feel the confidence in this, in this STAR home or in the BRIDGE home in providing care, because you're, you, there's a consistent problem that happened. So if you, if we want to go, so you renewed the contract. And then if we want to go beyond that, renewing of the contract, from year 2021 to half of year 2023, there were five incidences between employees and youth, three of which are of sexual nature, two of assault, and three incidences between youth and youth. And two of those are sexual nature, and one of them is assault. So all in all, we've had in that timeframe, eight incidences in this one house. Very serious incidences. So I guess I have to say, what has to happen in, in one of these homes that would, you might deem that this contract shouldn't be renewed or that they shouldn't be providing the services?
I just, I don't think it's a black and white answer, because like during those, during that time period, we were recognizing what was happening in the world in terms of response to the pandemic. We have children who are highly traumatized that come to us during that time, so it's not unusual for there to be youth-on-youth types of behavior. And the incidences involving the staff members were addressed by the STAR home. And I will say that the cumulative effect of that resulted in a corrective action plan. And so it wasn't that there was a blind eye torn to it, that there was a consistent consideration to what was happening there and continued program level people in the home and meeting with the, the leadership of that particular home. So I, you know, I, it's hard to look at things in hindsight and say, you know, what, what we would have, should have, could have done at that particular time. I will say that each of those incidences were investigated and evaluated on their merit and that we continue to work with this provider and their ability to, to make sure that they maintain staff that can keep kids safe.
Okay. I have a question. There was a question raised earlier by my fellow co, my chair that talked about. that talked about the response time. So it's my understanding that, you know, the way, the, that the vendor makes their own report as to what transpires, and then the information makes it way to you through a portal. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you said the response was immediate. So if it's going through a port, if it's happening, I'm just giving you an example.
Sure.
If it's happening at two o'clock in the morning, it's going through a portal, correct?
Yes.
So are you responding at two o'clock in the morning?
So our Caroline is twenty-four seven. Our Caroline Director is here and she can speak to the mechanics of the portal. But yeah, if it requires an immediate response, we do have response time designations that can respond twenty-four seven.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Senator. I just want to remind everyone that we do have an extensive list of representatives and senators. And obviously, because you are the ranking member, we are giving you more leeway. But please be mindful of the amount of questions that need to be asked by other members of this committee. So I do ask, we have a hard stop for this meeting at three P M. So if you could wrap things up with one or two more questions so that we can move on to the next committee members. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to respond to the immediate question?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, I can do that. So when it's after hours, the congregate care setting will call the Caroline and will file a report of abuse or neglect or an incident. They also complete what they call a, a significant event form that goes to a, a risk management mailbox or a portal. But they will call us after hours. So Caroline is twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, we respond after hours. So they will call us and then we will assess the situation and determine what our next steps are.
So you would remove, you have the capability? And did you remove people immediately, even if it was after hours?
So I, I do want to respond to that. It's not the expectation that the department removes staff members. The contractor or the provider would make the decision to make, to take an H R action against their employee.
Okay, and then, well, that raised, that brings me to another, yet another question that I.
I think what we could do is circle back and come to you if you want to make note of that. And we can have some additional questions answered by members of the committee and we'll circle, circle back to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Senator. Representative Wielander.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here today. Acknowledging the sort of chronic understaffing that D C F, as well as basically any provider for children's services has been facing for the past decades, let alone the, the recent impact of the pandemic. I'm reading through the testimony, reading, you know, doing some research on this. These are serious traumatic experiences that these kids are facing. And the staffing information sheet brought up some concerns. The psychiatrist that's only available for two hours per week, a nurse only eight hours per week, one clinician who is trained in dealing with some mental and behavioral crises. It's, these are, are children who are coming in with massive, massive traumatic experiences that are made worse by not being in their own home and, and processing everything. So I just wanted to note that, that I think this, that's something that we need to address. If we're trying to ensure that our children are being given the services that they need to recover as much as possible, that perhaps that staffing for those positions need to be seriously looked at.
I also just want to clarify that STAR is not intended to be a treatment level of care. And so there are calibrations for the amount of time that a particular clinician would have to be in a treatment level of care versus the availability of a particular provider to, you know, have access to someone if they need it for an episodic situation.
So that actually sort of really dovetails right into my next thought, which is in question. The, the hold is only for the Harwinton House, right?
Yes.
Thank you. But there are other STAR homes that are still receiving children with the same high level of need and treatment?
Yes.
And are residents, are these similar incidents happening at other homes on a regular basis?
Similar incidences. So when I looked over our data over the period of time that we were looking to see whether or not the STAR Harwinton Home was an outlier, I saw regular calls and notifications to our Carolinas, the Caroline Director described, because of the level of care in the congregate settings that typically get that type of volume. What I didn't see was the level of child abuse neglect investigations that we saw. That was the outlier, which I think ultimately resulted in that corrective action plan. But I, I think it is fair to say that congregate care tends to get a lot of activity.
So what would be the ideal solution? What type of supports need to be expanded in order to ensure that children with those high levels of acuity are not being put into a situation or a setting that is acknowledged to be not where they are.
Not for treatment, yeah, as a temporary setting. I do think that chat, systems are challenged in terms of meeting the needs of kids with the appropriate level of service. And we saw that across our Children's Behavioral Health Continuum, that the legislature kind of helped us develop some new models of care. What I also want to highlight is that we have jurisdictions across the country that are having children stay in D C F offices overnight or in hotels overnight. And now those are definitely not something that we would ever want to see happen here in Connecticut. And I want to make sure that your last question around what, what do we need to make sure that kids have their needs? I want to make sure that everyone knows how dire this is in other jurisdictions at this very moment. You know, not exaggerating at all. It's called a hard-to-place-kids crisis in the kind of conversations that I have with my peers across the country. But I think it's more of what you're describing. It's, you know, how has the system evolved in order to make sure that we are all able to meet the needs of kids? Just based on what we just described as what some of their presentations are. What we saw in the profiles of a lot of the kids that we had here is that many of those levels of care that we currently have, have been tried. And you, you know, you heard the average number of placements that some of our children that were in a STAR home have. The STAR is also the level of care that has no eject or no reject policies. So you know, they are often the type of setting that can accept kids when other levels can deny.
Thank you for that information. I think it's just, it's very clear that we need to do some serious work in order to ensure that the kids are safe, that we are doing everything we can. I mean, other states may have those serious issues and we don't, and that's something I'm very grateful for. But we don't want to get to a point where we're seeing this become a, a crisis in other homes and that the kids are able to get the services that they need in the most appropriate setting to match their, their treatment. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Representative. Representative Candelora, followed by Senator Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for, for coming today. This is certainly not an easy issue to be dealing with. And I think when a lot of us read that rapport, you know, our hearts really break for these children. And my, my concern, there's so much here to unpack, and I know we don't have a lot of time, and I would love to continue this conversation. Because my, my concern, what I'm hearing today is that, and in reading the Child Advocates Report, you know, we have this tiered structure of services that we, we are providing and that these STAR homes are really, you know, short-term respite care homes. They're not equipped to be dealing with children with higher levels of trauma. And the worst thing in the world we could be doing is taking a child out of a home that's experienced trauma and then putting them into a different setting to receive additional trauma. And that's something that I think we're all interested in stopping. And so I'm concerned globally that the, the STAR home settings isn't appropriate for all these different children that are being placed there. And the comment that you made about the, the, sort of the end facility to go to because they cannot refuse. Is that fundamentally the, the problem here? Or, or are we, is it, you know, are we properly evaluating these kids? Because some of these children, I think, shouldn't, should never end up in a STAR home. They should be in a higher level inpatient care or therapeutic services. Is, is there an issue with evaluating the children? Or is there a bigger problem in being able to place these children?
I, I definitely appreciate this question because D C F and Connecticut has a pretty robust ability to evaluate the needs of kids that need a level of care beyond their, a family setting. And so we use the Administrative Service Organization of Carillon, not Caroline, of our twenty-four seven responses to our telephone call. Carillon Behavioral Health is our administrative service or organization that actually does the level of care in terms of the clinical presentation of all of the kids that need placement. And what we know is that the availability of specific levels of care is not always the reason why a child is matched to a particular level of care. But it's the child's needs at the time of the clinical presentation that drives where they are placed. And so what you're seeing, particularly with kids who have repeated incidences of being placed in, or repeated episodes of being placed in a STAR home, is that their presentation at the time that they were placed there met the level of care need and, and not a higher level of care. What we see that are described in this particular situation is escalation of their clinical needs that may have required a reevaluation at that particular time for whatever was going on with that child or the predatory behavior that, you know, we've heard about here today. So I, I want you to be assured that there is the ability and the regular expectation that the level of clinical need for a child is what determines the level of care of where they're placed. Now, what happens over time, once the child is there, is something that we as a system have to, you know, continually evaluate.
And do we see the, the, the higher level of care? Like the, the therapeutic foster care homes? Or the subacute care facilities? Are, are they refusing these children? And, you know, is, because I, I guess what I'm getting at is there could be a heightened level of behavior that they need to go to an inpatient setting? And are we finding that there are sort of brick walls that are set up because of the system where these children aren't able to enter into the care that they really need? And then the fallback is the, are the STAR homes?
Would, would it be helpful to hear from our liaison to Carillon Behavioral Health, who evaluates the level of care need to be able to answer the question very specifically that you, that you've raised?
Yeah, I don't want to take up too much time. That'd be my last question.
But I can, I can certainly get a more specific answer in terms of connecting to level of care. But the, the simple answer is the STAR homes do have the no eject, reject, but that the other levels of care can deny based on certain criteria. Madam Chair, if you, if you might, I think what might be helpful for Representative to hear from our liaison that helps make those level of care distinctions, because I think it will become a little clearer, if that.
Sure, that, that is fine. I just want to make note of the time, it's two twenty-five, and we would, we still have two others to testify. So we want to make sure that we can get through as many questions as possible. So thank you so much.
Certainly, I'll have her come just really briefly. This, this is Dr. Stephanie Springer, who is the D C F liaison to Carillon Behavioral Health, where they make the level of care distinctions. And the question that the representative asked has to do with the higher levels of care and whether or not they are rejecting a, a child who may meet that level of care criteria. Did I restate that appropriately?
Good afternoon.
Can you please state your name and your title for the record?
Yes, Dr. Stephanie Springer. I'm a behavioral health, I'm sorry, a health management administrator. As the Commissioner said, I serve in the capacity of the D C F Director for the Connecticut Behavioral Health Partnership.
Representative, if you wouldn't mind repeating the questions so she can answer appropriately, thank you.
Yeah, essentially, my, my question is, when we are evaluating these children to be placed in different facilities, are we, are the STAR homes ending up being default? Because a higher level of care that might be recommended just isn't available. For instance, you know, one of the, the acute care facilities will say, I don't want that child again. And we're left with no other alternative. And also, is there a shortage? You know, do we have inpatient care services? I know there's a waiting list for those beds. You know, what, what are the obstacles? Because to me, this looks like a systemic problem. It's, you know, you know, I know you can't erase crime. I mean, that, that's issues of the individual. But systemically, when I'm hearing that, you know, these cases of trauma occurring in these homes are repeated, it just sounds to me that the children aren't in the right places for care.
So as one of my colleagues mentioned earlier, the STAR homes are short-term assessment and respite homes. And in many instances, youth are placed there who come in to care with the department, who are unknown to us. So these facilities are set up to offer us the opportunity where they do an assessment and then we can determine what level of treatment is needed. Yes, there are instances in which you may require or meet the level of therapeutic group home level of care, for example. But the provider may deem that because of the other youth who are currently there, that the acuity is too much, it wouldn't be a, a good mix. And so then they have the option to deny or refuse to accept the youth into their program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative. Senator Cohen, followed by Senator Anmar.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for being here and for your testimony. And just, you know, reading through testimony and trying to really get a sense of the landscape here. I, I know all of us want to have sort of a pragmatic approach to something, something linear that we can come up with a solution in situations that are anything but. And each is unique and very difficult. So given the nature of this, I, I certainly understand the difficulty. I wonder if you could, I, I understand that there's four STAR homes operated by the Bridge. I just wonder, from a landscape of STAR homes, if you could reiterate how many, how many STAR homes there are in Connecticut? And what the typical number of youth are in each of those homes? I heard a little bit that, that we, you really try to keep those thirteen and older, if at all possible. And if you could also just let me know what short-term, what, what that's considered.
So Dr. Dixon can probably speak to that most succinctly.
So there's seven STAR programs across the state. Average age is between fourteen through sixteen, and there are forty total beds. So four of those STARS are run by this agency. And then there are other agencies that have one additional STAR apiece. So three other agencies have one STAR apiece.
Okay, and I, I heard today that there are, in, in looking at the data set, if you will, there's a similar number of incidents across homes. Would you say, if you look at that sort of two-year period, that, you know, this timeline, I heard you say the severity, you know, certainly of these incidents really sort of warranted a, a deeper dive? Would you say that there's been an increase? You know, we, we've talked about the increase in, in acuity and the need for these beds or placements. Would you say that there's been an increase in the number of incidents and calls to these homes across the state of Connecticut? And is there, you talked about a similar number. Is there a, a percentage that you could put your, your finger on? You know, for this particular Harwinton home as opposed to the others that, that saw sort of a, a percentage increase and certainly the severity of the incidents that occurred?
Yeah, I, I think I understand the question too, because it was the question that I posed to my team to determine whether or not this was an outlier. And what I also think has occurred on the good news is that there's been so much attention to our full Behavioral Health Continuum that many children are getting their needs met at home and in community. So that the kids that are in D C F placement or in placements of, of, of our sister state agencies may present as more acute because of circumstances that occurred over the last several years. But I also think it's reflective of the full continuum that we have for all Connecticut's kids that are now starting to fill some of those gaps. So when we think about evaluating our level, levels of care, it is, you know, kind of looking at the whole universe and seeing where children kind of fall along the continuum. So I, I, I do think that, you know, as we've indicated, the, the experiences of kids over the last three years reflect what's happening. experiences of kids over the last three years reflect what's happening and what we see. But then I also think that we've made significant strides here in Connecticut to make sure that we are meeting certain levels of care so they don't bottleneck as they have. So what we see here and the kids that we do have in care, the kids with these types of trauma histories in this type of setting, you know, is the reason why I appreciated the opportunity to come and talk and, you know, kind of put our collective heads together to make sure they have what they need. Did that did that get to?
Thank you for that. And and so recognizing that knee jerk reactions are not, you know, typically a solution. And also recognizing that displacement would be absolutely traumatic for everybody involved. Is there something that the department has policy wise? Or do we have Connecticut regulation around the number of incidences or type of incidences that would warrant closure of a home?
I I certainly believe that if we felt that there was a provider who was not responding to the needs of kids that are in their care, that we have a process that we would undergo to ensure that that not continue. So I, you know, I do, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this particular home and the series of events that have landed us here. But I also am quite confident at the procedures that we have in place that if there were that big of a concern with a provider that is an outlier from what we typically would see in these types of settings, that we do have a process to eliminate that provider from our 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 service array.
Okay, and so there is something in place.
Thank you very much, Senator. Unfortunately, in an effort to get all of the representatives and senators able to ask their questions, we'll have to move on. So thank you so much. Senator Anwar followed by Representative Dauphine, and then we will ask for Sarah Egan, our child advocate, to come up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, for your testimony and clarifying a number of things. I I know that in the testimony that was presented earlier by the the Bridge Home, there's a the conversation about the background checks. It appears that the background checks did not work. Is it important? I hope we can find out who did the background check, what is their credibility? And perhaps there's an opportunity to see if there's improvement that we can make around individuals or groups that are doing background checks on some of these critical employees. So it's just something that I think maybe we can answer later or or maybe through the chairs, the permission, perhaps share with the committee.
If I may answer that question, I don't believe that there were any incidences in which there was an employee that was working for that particular provider that did not pass their background check. What I thought I heard from the written testimony that was submitted by the provider was that every employee of theirs undergoes a background check as well as a Child Protective Service registry check. I don't believe that we had any incidences in which someone had a hit on a background check and continued to work there.
And and what what I'm also suggesting is perhaps there's an opportunity to improve the system because the background check did not protect the children. So that's something that's probably outside the scope of our conversation today. But from a legislative point of view, I think that's something to look at. And also maybe the ratios could be something to talk about to increase protection. But thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much, Senator. We have a question now from Representative Dauphine. We did have a last minute question request from another representative, and we will absolutely go to her. But I do want to remind members of the committee that we do have a hard stop at 3:00 PM. We have two other people who are scheduled to testify. So we ask that you keep your questions limited. Thank you very much. Representative Dauphine.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for being here today, Commissioner. My question is very specific to staffing. I know, I think it was Representative Wielander asked about staffing. You gave it a an explanation of that at the time of admission, you were staffed according to the need of the therapeutic need of of those individuals in the home. It seems to me, I don't know who's evaluating them for that therapeutic need, but upon entry, they're they're entering a level of care that has virtually no therapeutic need, according to this pyramid that I'm looking at. And then and then at some point, you you come to the conclusion that they need a higher level of of care or therapeutic need. And it doesn't seem to me like the staffing is changing according to that. And I'm just want, I'm just really concerned about that and the fact that most, you know, I'm a nurse, so we all, and I'm also very, you know, in tune to those IEPs that they do in school. We do care plans according to the needs of of patients or clients as as they're entered into a a care system, right? So so it seems to me like you believe that these individuals that enter this level of care don't have a high level of therapeutic need. Is that is that correct?
You know, there's a couple of things that you've just indicated in your recollection of what was reported. And I just want to clarify, what we said was that the levels of care are staffed according to whether or not they are treatment. So the STAR homes are not considered a treatment level of care. So their staffing doesn't fluctuate based on the needs of the child. The levels, the staffing levels change based on the levels of care that we have available in our system. What I also said was that when a child enters a level of, when a child comes into our care, we can evaluate their clinical needs. And what we heard from our behavioral health representative is that there are times that kids come to us that we don't have a lot of clinical information on them. And so that assessment of what their level of need is, is ongoing while they're at the STAR. So I wanted to make sure that you heard that it the staffing of a particular home is not changing based on the children that are placed there. But our levels of care across the continuum have different staffing complements.
Okay, I I'm still a little confused because we want to meet the needs of these individuals that are going into the homes. And you don't, you're saying that you you're not quite sure of what their need is when they come in.
Sometimes.
Sometimes. And then when you when you discover their need, how how is that addressed for those individuals? Are they then moved out quickly to a facility that can better meet those needs? Because it seems to me that many of the children that are there are shouldn't be there. Their their need is much higher than the level of care that you're able to provide in these homes. And it seems a little dangerous that you would be placing individuals into these homes when you don't know their level of care need. And it could be much higher and the individual, the the placement can't meet their need. So perhaps this is why some of these these incidences are happening. They need a much higher level of care that is not met or can't be met by the staffing at the STAR homes.
So what I would say is that the STAR homes are intended to be short term assessment and respite homes. And so the A in the STAR home is for that assessment to occur to determine a level of care. I wish it could be, as soon as we determine a level of care, a child is immediately moved to that level of care. But sometimes it doesn't happen that quickly. There are processes around all of that. And I wish I could say that, you know, before we know the level of care that a child needs or before we know what their presentation is, that we not accept them. At the Department of Children and Families, we have to be able to make sure that we present a situation in which a child can be safe from a situation that they're in. So if they are in a hospital and the hospital has deemed that they're appropriate for discharge and they're calling us to say, you know, DCF, you need to place this child, that would be an appropriate place for us to continue to assess what that child's needs. But we don't have a full profile of what the child looks like. So I, you know, I wouldn't want a child not coming into care and staying in a hospital unnecessarily because we've heard, you know, that issue being raised in terms of children backing up in levels of care on the behavioral health side of this conversation.
I I guess I would just say that it seems, it seems, it seems somewhat irresponsible to put someone in a home that could potentially put everybody at danger, depending on what their therapeutic level of need is. And it seems to me like there should be an opportunity to to remove those children immediately for their safety and the safety of others. If if something is diagnosed or a level of need that that the home can't meet should should, you know, surface. So anyway.
Certainly, I would be making placements that are irresponsible. Certainly, I can respond in a way that reflects our confidence in the and how we assess the needs of kids, how we assess the levels of care in our continuum. I didn't develop the pyramid that everyone's referring to. So I'll I'll leave that to my colleague to talk about because there are some descriptions in there that I don't necessarily agree with. But I will say that, you know, we started this this conversation today with this explanation of the characteristics of kids that we, all of us, are charged with making sure have what they need. When children come to us, oftentimes that information is not known. Oftentimes it is known and that we have to make a placement and work with our providers to make sure that they are supported to have their needs met. What has occurred over time with this particular home has been assessed each and every time there's been an incident. There are a variety of reasons why these things have occurred that none of us would want to have happen to any child that is in our care. But I will tell you that everything that we do is not from a place of irresponsibility because my staff in my care line, in my regulatory division, in my licensing division, and in my child welfare division take great pride in what they do to make sure that kids are okay. And so, you know, as we work with our providers and develop a need, the what they're what's needed across the system, I would just appreciate that we could do so collaboratively and not, you know, pejoratively.
Well, certainly, we want to do that. I do know that patients that are discharged from a hospital do come with a plan. So I'm assuming that that plan cooperatively has been reviewed with regard to.
Thank you for that, Representative. Unfortunately, we are short on time, and so we need to give your colleague an opportunity to ask one final question before we move on. I just want to remind everybody here that this is very different than a public hearing on a bill. There are no decisions that are going to be made out of this. This is the very first step in a long series of discussions before there's any possibility for legislation to move forward. So please note that this is in no way asking people not to partake in the process, but just to be mindful of the time. Representative Master Francesco.
Thank, thank you, Representative. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here for today, and I appreciate your testimony. It's very thorough. I'm trying to get into my mind how we got into a point of where we are today. I think we've heard a lot about the quality of care and and what these children need. And certainly, we need to do a deeper dive in that. But I'm trying to figure out how did we get here today to the situation that we're in? And I was looking at your timeline. My question, I believe, is to your timeline.
Okay.
I, when I learned about this incident, unfortunately, we read it in the news, right? And when I was reading it, I was reading an article where the police were called to this home 16 times within a month. My question to Madam Commissioner is it, who and when? Who is required to report to the department or the state when a police officer is called into one of these STAR homes? Who is responsible and is it a certain level that they call? So if it's just a minor incident and they were called there, we don't need to contact the state or the DCF on that. I want to know who, I was wondering who is responsible for contacting the state?
So I I do, I appreciate that question because I do believe that what we see here in terms of the high volume of calls, particularly at STAR, particularly at the Harwinton STAR, is a result of the provider calling because they believe they're meeting the contractual expectations of that level of care. And so when I talked about the incidences taxing smaller municipalities versus larger, we do see that some of the smaller towns say, you know, we can't come every single time you call. And in fact, you know, thinking about those incidences through their available resources is, I think, part of the reason why there's a concern from the municipality. But, you know, I can't, I don't want to speak for them. So I do think that what your your question is, what your question is, is a valid one in terms of the provider calling because there's an expectation that they're calling from the minor all the way through to the serious incidences that we've been talking about here today.
But are they required to contact the Department of Children and Families that there has been an incident here? Do they contact them right away? Okay, yeah, so in this particular time, I'm I'm reading that there was a, the police were called to this home 16 times in one month. I guess the question is, when does somebody put their hand up and say, whoa, we got a problem here? The police have been here 16 times. And this was just recently in the last, during the summertime. And then something needs to be done about it. So I'm wondering if it's happened then, has it happened before? And I would want to know, and I guess this is a discussion that that needs to have. How did we get here today and what's going to be done about it going forward? And not to wait until something escalates 16 times before we take action.
Yeah, no, I don't believe we've waited. What I, what happens is that there are certain criteria when there's a reasonable suspicion of abuse or neglect that also warrants a call to the DCF care line, that the notification that comes to us through our provider portal will give us real time data as to what the provider is telling us is occurring with regards to law enforcement calls. And so those are the things that get regularly reported through the notification portal. But that when there is a reasonable suspicion of abuse or neglect, they're certainly not a wait and, you know, wait to find out.
Okay, so you would acknowledge that the police could have been called there 16 times in one month.
They could have been.
They could have been.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative. I appreciate your time. And thank you, Commissioner, and to your entire staff. Thank you all very much. Again, I will just reiterate that this is the very beginning of a very long conversation of working together and moving forward.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I will also say that it's not the beginning for the department and that hopefully with the responses that we've provided here today, there's a level of confidence with the department and the way that we respond to incidences and the trust that we have in our providers if there is a concern and how we respond. And I want to make sure that everyone, all of the legislators who are here, all of the municipalities who are listening, will know that the department is responsive to any concerns that are raised to us and that just because we're limited in our ability to talk today because of time, we can certainly make ourselves available to have conversations to make sure Connecticut's children have what they need.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And the committee would like to ask our child advocate, Sarah Egan, to come testify.
So good afternoon to the committee. I'm Sarah Egan. I run the state's office of the child advocate. I know we're short on time, so I don't want to go through our whole report. I want to make sure that folks know what we've submitted. We have submitted a testimony in the form of a mini report with findings and recommendations. It's my understanding everybody has a copy of that. I also had prepared, if we'd had a little bit more time, a very brief PowerPoint to walk through some of the basic findings from that report and recommendations. But I I don't want to take up the time to do that. And we've covered a lot of the really important aspects, I think, of our report. So I I wanted to respond to, wanted to combine some responses to the questions that folks have posed and and reference a couple of key areas from our findings and recommendations. One, I also want to say, you know, that that we've listened carefully to the comments from the Department of Children and Families, the Commissioner and her team. And there's a lot I agree with that they've talked about, right? And that we've heard from committee members. One, you know, the needs of, this is not about blaming girls, right? And so I do want to reiterate that, even though we've all talked about that. You know, these girls are, they are victims, you know, and many of them have been repeatedly victimized throughout, you know, very short lives of 13, 14, 15 years. And I do think it is really important to think about and to say out loud, you know, what that means for children who may be, may have no capacity to trust adults, who put their belongings in bags and move from placement to placement to placement, as we've heard about. You know, that we looked at the placement changes for a lot of the girls that have been in STAR homes, not just Harwinton, but several STAR homes across our system. So I'm at median placement changes of eight over the last few years and what that's like. With each placement change, probably felt as a personal failure by that child, a sense of rejection, harder and harder. I mean, I used to represent children, right? And I think about that leap of faith that a child takes every time they cross the threshold of a new setting, that adults there were care for them, that there is light at the end of this tunnel. And I raise this even though we've talked about it here today because I think it is so important. And I want to emphasize that as we do our homework on this and we talk to providers and advocates and families around the state, they repeat something to us all the time, that these girls are hopeless. They are without hope. And the people in the homes, and whether it's the STAR home or whether it's a PRTF or whether it's the emergency department, where, yes, we do have kids bored. We have kids who sit in EDs for weeks at a time, sometimes younger than 10 years old. And you know why? Because there's nowhere to go. And so that's where I really want to double down on some of the comments and questions that people have made. And I want to say this with all due respect because I know everybody's trying. Everybody here cares deeply about kids. Everybody's trying their best. Department of Children and Families doesn't control all aspects of our healthcare system. I understand that. But my concern is that children are not matched to STAR homes. Children get put in STAR homes because there's nowhere else for them to be. We know that. We know that. Many of these children have moved repeatedly through STAR homes. We see children with lengths of stay ranging from a couple of days, they just got there, to over 500 days. What could anybody possibly say to that child at that point? Right? And so we, we do have a lot of work to do in our system. And part of the problem, to me, the STAR home, we're long past chicken, we're long past the canary in the coal mine. Because the canary staying in the coal mine in our children's mental health system a long time ago. Right? And we are partly in this position because our continuum of mental health care is not where it needs to be. Because we don't have a cohesive system. And I, I know there are folks in this room who will disagree with that, right? And I respect that disagreement. But in my view, we do not have a cohesive system of care for children. We have log jams at every level of care. I know that there are parents in this gallery today. And there are probably parents sitting right here in front of them who have begged and pleaded and cried for care for their child. And nobody should have to do that. And it's not about fault, but it is about system design and planning. And we are responsible for that. And why do we have kids sitting in STAR home for 533 days? Because you know where for them to go. We don't have enough treatment foster care homes. We don't have capacity for girls in particular, go back to that pyramid, that, that, that PRTF level of care. There's like a permanent wait of 100 to 120 days to get into that level of care. And that may not even be the right one for that child. It's just what we have. And it's good that we have diminished congregant care for kids. We relied, we used to send hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of children flat at them with intellectual disabilities and autism to out of state placements for years. One of the first kids I ever represented as a lawyer lived in an out of state residential treatment center in Massachusetts. And I remember going to visit him for the first time, he'd been there for two years. And I thought, motherfucker, you must be so disabled. I wonder if he'll even be able to talk to me. I mean, this is what I thought, how naive and inexperienced that was. And I get there and he's like, a kid. And I said, you know what a lawyer is? And he was like, yeah, you're here to advocate for me. I'm like, oh my God, what is this kid doing here? So we don't do that in our system the way we used to, and that is good. But that doesn't mean that we do not need to reimagine how we allocate resources to support the kind of 24/7 treatment settings that frankly, in my view, kids and families can't access when they need them. Right? And so I think there is, there is work to do, some of it's long term, right? There is no silver bullet. It's not going to be just foster care. It's not going to be just therapeutic group homes. But I think you do have to raise questions about why are we doubling down on the STAR home model? And no disrespect to the providers. I have so much respect for providers who keep their doors open to anybody that's referred and are trying their best, right? A, one question would be, how are we supporting the STAR homes themselves? You know, the enhanced care should happen across all STAR homes. And who's going to pay for that? Where those investments going to come from? And I'll wrap in just one minute because I, I know you get up here and then it's like, we're all so passionate. But, you know, so where's that technical assistance and support going to come from? And so it's not a criticism of the STAR home providers, right? But it is, is this the model we want? Right? Is this the model we should be proliferating and re-procuring? And I know those decisions won't get made today, right? But I think that that is something policymakers need to weigh in on. Is that what we should be doing? We got utilization in group homes down. We got utilization in STAR homes up. And all of these girls have been in multiple placements. At least a third have already been in a treatment foster home. Right? So, you know, I respect the, I respect the information that's been provided. I respect the questions that have been asked. And I think a lot of them really boil down to, are we giving girls what they need? What they deserve? And let me add from the perspective of a lawyer, what they are entitled to. Because we owe them a lot more. We, I do think, to echo what someone said here today, we have a lot of work to do going forward. And we are here to be part of that work, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. As always, every time you come before this committee, we wind up thanking you so much for your expertise and your insight and your passion for these kids and all kids. And I think that you have summed up a lot of what we need to talk about moving forward. I think that's where we're at, that, and, and it is 3:00. So the meeting, unfortunately, excuse me, is coming to an end. We did have an additional person to testify, but because we've hit the time limit, I do ask that all legislators be able to look at their packets to read that testimony. And if the gentleman wouldn't mind staying afterwards to perhaps answer questions while we don't have use of the room and the systems. I have really, as the chair, co-chair of this committee, I have one question on behalf of myself and my fantastic co-chair is, and I already know the answer. Will you please make yourself available to the members of this committee and to any member of the legislature who certainly wants to take on the heavy lift of making the necessary and more than adequate changes that are needed to benefit the health, safety and welfare of kids, not just all in the state of Connecticut, because that's very important, but with an added focus of kids in crisis?
Of course.
Thank you. I appreciate you so much. With that, we will conclude this meeting with one last reminder. This is just the very first step in more conversation that we need to have. I am absolutely heartened by the fact that we were joined by our minority leader in the House. Mr. Minority Leader, thank you so much for your commitment to this issue as well. I cannot thank you enough, and I look forward to working with you intently on this, sir. So thank you. I'd like to thank our chairs of approbes who also took the time to be here because ultimately we all need to work together to properly fund what we need to do for our kids. And I believe that there's a lot of questions that we'll have to go through them as well. And I'd like to take a second to also thank Senator Semenara, who has really taken this issue on as necessary for her constituents and for her town government. You are a wonderful senator and representative for the people in your district. And I can't thank you enough either, Madam.
Thank you very much for the compliment. And, and I really, I, I do want to just take one brief moment to say that I did read Sarah Egan's testimony, and it is very much worth the read. And I encourage everybody to do so. It's a very thorough report. She's done a very good job. Her and her team have done a very, very good job, and they always do. And I appreciate your testimony today and your candor. And I do agree with you, and I do agree with all of you. I'm a social worker. In the end, all I want is for children to be cared for the way they deserve to be cared for. That's it. That's it. And that's all it is in a nutshell. I'm not here to make accusatory things. I just want to ensure that children get what they need. And I feel that in this situation, we miss the mark. We miss the mark, and we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the people who came to testify. We do apologize for those who came to testify if we ran out of time. But once again, please know this is a continuing conversation. Thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned.